So the reason we're having this town hall meeting is to discuss the process by which assessments on the whole properties in Closter, we have had an awful lot of questions, myself, members of the council, about the reassessment process. One thing that we do know is that everything in Closter has been going up. To those of us who live here, that's a good thing. I know how your homes is increasing. Along with that comes a concern of, you know, one of my taxes is going to be at a new rate. That's what we're going to try to explain tonight. But mostly we're here to discuss the process of assessment. Before I introduce the speakers, I just want to acknowledge a couple of people. Chris Cho, Councilman, Joe Yanmarino, Councilman, Tim Winters, Borough Administrator, Kevin Whitney, IT Director. And I think that's it on the folks who work here in Closter. So we're going to, I'm going to first introduce Angela Matisse, who is the Tax Assessor for the Borough of Closter. She has been Tax Assessor for how many years? You're not going to answer. It's been a long time. Rick DeGurcio is the Chief Executive Officer of Appraisal Systems. They are the company that does the actual appraisals for our residential properties here in Closter, residential and commercial. His along with him is Sarah Gerbe. And last but not least is Levi Cool of the firm of Huntington Bailey, who is the Borough Attorney for the Borough of Closter. So I'm going to turn it over to Angela. And I just want to make one statement. We've said this in the notice of this meeting. We can't take any questions on specific properties. The purpose of tonight is so that people can understand the process we go through in the bidding assessments. So Angela.
Okay. So as Mayor said, I have with me here tonight Sarah, Rick, and Levi. We've created a PowerPoint presentation that's going to discuss the implementation and take us through the inspections and all the way through the appeal process. And again, we are going to not specifically talk about any one specific property, but just the entire process of the annual assessments. We are presently in the first year of our second cycle, which means we've completed one five-year cycle. Now we're starting by second. And after the PowerPoint presentation and then a little description from Sarah, we'll open the floor up to some questions and answers. Sarah, you want, or Rick, whoever wants to start?
Well, first I'll introduce myself. My name's Rick DeGurcio. I'm the owner of Appraisal Systems. To my right is Sarah. She was the Project Manager for the reassessment that we just completed this year. Appraisal Systems has a long history in Closter, going back 20 years. We've done, we did the revale over 20 years ago. And we've done reassessments, many reassessments and many revales since. So, you know, my firm is very much aware of the market in Closter and it is a diverse market between the commercial properties, residential properties, all different types of properties. So we are experienced in, specifically in this, in this market area on this town. So, but we are doing now something a little different than your traditional, what I like to call a one-and-done revaluation, where historically, a town would be ordered to do a revaluation by the County Board of Taxation. The town would go out to find a firm. That firm would come in and do the entire revaluation from scratch. Historically, that's the way that, you know, things were done in Bergen County. But they were very costly because you're essentially doing everything from scratch. And they're very costly to the town, very time-consuming. And they didn't hold very long because the market, as we all know, changes not only on a year-to-year basis, but quite frankly, on a month-to-month basis. So when you would do a revaluation in 2005, for example, as we all remember, in just a few short years, those numbers became obsolete because we had a downturn in the market in 2008. We're kind of faced with that now, where we're really not sure which direction the market is going to go. You know, especially since COVID, the market has been really kind of all over the place for different specific property types. And I think it's really important that you don't just do a snapshot of the market in one particular year, in one particular market, and then just use those assessments for the next five years or 10 years, like it was traditionally done. So to the credit of the Borough, the last time they did a full-blown revaluation, when they were ordered five years ago, they said, okay, look, we paid for this. We have the values right now. But knowing the market, the way it is, generally speaking, but more specifically knowing the way the market is in the Borough of Closter, let's, let's maintain this each and every year. And there's a program now in place that a lot of municipalities in Bergen County are taking advantage of called annually reassessment, which means you're not doing everything over from scratch each and every year. Rather, you're looking at the market as it moves on a year-to-year basis. And you are analyzing all different property types based on all the market data, prevailing market data, and you're making adjustments on a year-to-year. We, Sarah has put together a PowerPoint presentation to just run through some of the benefits of this program. As Angela said, the Borough's been doing this for four years now. And we're going to show you why we think it's been working very well for the Borough. And in light of what the future holds for the market, my personal opinion is it should be continued because I think some strange market forces are going to be at play in the next year or two or three. And now is the time to make sure that whatever happens in the spring of '24 or the spring of '25, we're right there to pick up on it, catch it, and make the assessments equitable and fair and uniform, regardless of the direction the market moves. So Sarah, do you want to just run through the PowerPoint?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to come out tonight. I'm just going to do a brief overview of the reassessment process, and then we'll follow with a Q and A. What is a reassessment? A reassessment is to appraise all real property at their market value. What is the purpose? The purpose is to equally spread the tax burden based upon the market. As we know, Closter has a diverse market, has multifamily dwellings, has industrial, various types of homes within, within the Borough. Reasons to do a reassessment, tax appeals. Maintaining market value helps alleviate the burden of the homeowner to file an appeal because you're at market value at 100%, opposed to being below 100 and then being heavily utilized. Another reason with, with appeals, when you maintain 100% of market value, it helps alleviate the tax appeals that the Borough goes through and drains their financial stability. As mentioned, we started the reassessment program in 2018. Tax the first year that we started. As you can see, this is just a snapshot of the appeal history, just to show what this has affected on the appeals. And if you look at 2015...
Yeah, just to interject, I had talked about five years ago, this year with the asterisk, but 2018, the Borough was actually ordered to do a revaluation that year. So they were inclined to do something that particular year. The Borough, as I described earlier, you know, elected to follow with this program we're talking about.
So we had it broken down by tax year. And then you can see the amount of county appeals and see how it starts to decrease once we started the reassessment. If you look at 2017 and 2018, we're in the 50s and 60s. And going down to present tax year, 2023 data is 17. So that amount of appeals has decreased dramatically, which is evident that we're maintaining market value within town.
So that's the number of appeals in Closter that were made in the county, correct?
Correct. Correct. At a county level.
Yeah, just a couple of things I want to point out on this spreadsheet. The reason why we put '15, '16, and '17 here, those years, nothing, nothing was being done in terms of reassessment, revaluation. And so from 2015, you had a tax rate at 2.19, nothing being done on the reassessment front. Your tax rate, because of budgetary increases, went to 2.23, then it went to 2.28. That will show you that you don't need a reassessment in order to raise taxes if you're a municipality. All you need to do to raise taxes if you're a municipality is to increase your budget. When I say the town, I mean the school, the county, the town portion, school being the largest portion, as we know. But doing a reassessment in and of itself is not a means by which the town can raise taxes. Conversely, we did the revaluation, which set the tax rate at 2.22. And you can see the stability, 2.21, 2.24, 2.30, 2.21 to 2.14. So the, the tax rate actually dropped some. That's basically the math when you're maintaining, as opposed to just doing nothing. And then the budgetary increases, county, school, local, just get moved right into the tax base, which is unchanged. In this case, in '15, '16, and '17 is unchanged. So now your assessment changes, we all know. So you see, in those three years, the average assessment was 680. 680, 680, 680. That didn't change because there was no reassessment. And then, once we started doing it, you see, when we adjust to market value, it went from 699 to 713 all the way to 827 last year. So that went up. But interestingly, when you see the stability of the tax rate in all those years, and you apply these increases to a, in this case, a falling tax rate, the average residential tax went from 15,500 to 17,600, which is about $2,000. But that's over six years of budgetary increase. Versus the year where your assessment didn't change at all, just in three years' time, you went from 14.8 to 15.5. So you can kind of see the trend, that if the reassessment is not done in these years here, this 14.8 most likely would turn into a much bigger number than this 17.6 is today. All the while, you know, the town is, it's a good town. The values are increasing. That's a good thing. That's happening in, in, in most of the area here. But it's a matter of adjusting the areas that need to be adjusted and lowering the areas that need to be lowered on a year-to-year basis, which, which nets it out and brings the tax rate level and stable.
Doing this annually, we're able to maintain our records and keep them up to date and follow the market trends. As Rick mentioned, there may be some areas within the Borough that are seeing more active activity in the market, bringing up values, or maybe vice versa, going downwards. So we're able to capture those changes in the market during each year, opposed to waiting maybe 10 years in between to do another one. Now, part of the annual reassessment, not everyone is inspected each year. This is important to know, that 20% of the town will be inspected. However, everyone, 100%, will be reassessed. So you're still getting a value letter. It's just the inspection portion that that 20% applies to.
Let me stop right there, Sarah, real quick, because I want to clarify that. It seems to be a point of confusion in a lot of municipalities you can do this in, where people are confusing or they're overlaying the reassessment of property versus the inspection of property. So what I like to do is separate the two. And we have two assignments, okay? The first assignment is to verify the objective data, is to go into the town and sample to the tune of, say, 20% per year, spot measurements, looking at properties to make sure that property record card is correct, items are accurate and picked up, making sure the data is right. That's our one assignment. Independent of that, a second assignment is to gather all of the market data as it occurs, commercial, residential, vacant land, on a year-to-year basis, and apply all of that data in the entire market. Okay? So it's not, well, 20% are reassessed this year and 20% are reassessed that year, or are you taking data from 20% and applying it to 100%? We're taking 100% of the data, market data, in residential valuation at sales. We're taking 100% of the sales, and we're applying that across the board and making an appropriate adjustment. The objective data is just on, on a rotating basis, just to make sure that we're dealing with accurate data. The state requires that you do that. And the reason why the state requires that you do that is because by continuing this program, a municipality will never get ordered to do a revaluation again. That's a fact. And they want to make sure that if a town continues this program and they never do a revaluation again, they want to make sure that the assessor and staff, possibly the staff, goes out from time to time and checks the validity of the objective data. That's why they want the inspections done concurrent to the 100% valuation. Hopefully I explained that correctly.
Pretty much, but we're just going over about the inspection cycle, how everyone is getting reassessed, getting valued. Only 20% is getting the inspection. Now, there's going to be some exceptions to this inspection, 20% each year, whether you call and request another inspection, or there's maybe permit work, maybe pulled out a permit to the property if you file the tax appeal, or if you have an informal hearing with us and we see that we need to do another inspection. So we, you may end up with another inspection on top of that in these instances. The inspection process, you, the only people that will receive that intro letter, making you aware of the inspection, are the ones that are part of that 20%. So you will receive notification in the mail, letting you know that in the upcoming months, we will be doing inspections. All the inspectors' information are posted on our website. It's given to the police and the Borough Clerk as well. That way, everyone's aware of who's gone around the Borough doing the inspections that have photo ID. If no one's home, a notice will be left on the door with a phone number that you can call to make arrangements for an inspection, which we still offer on virtual contactless inspections if you're weary still of having someone up to the home. How market values determine. Closter is divided into neighborhoods based upon zoning and location. We review all the sales, the listings, actives, and the contracts, just to get an idea of the market trends. For 2024 reassessment purpose, the ones you're willing to zero in on on October 1st, 2022, to October 1st, 2023. And at that point, we're able to create a model of a sales review. One thing that's important to mention, when you're appealing your assessment, you can't break down the land to appeal or just the improvement value to appeal. You're appealing the total assessment. Tax impact, we, we calculated by dividing the current year's change, which you'll see is 1.061, by the new tax rate, the current is 2.144. And that's where we came up with the estimated new tax rate. And this does not include, include any budgets changes for the county, the municipality, and the school. This is just an estimated rate, just to give you an idea as to where your taxes will fall in line. Again, just because your assessment increases, it doesn't mean that your taxes necessarily do. It's important to utilize the tax calculator that we post on the website to get a better idea where your taxes are going. Questions?
Okay, so, so that's, that's our, our presentation now. Rick, can I?
I have a couple of questions for you guys that I know the answers to, but I think might be good for edification purposes. Sure. All things the same, that the municipal budget stays level?
Yes.
And our industrial market is very strong.
Yes.
What does that do to the tax burden for different classes of property? So you have one, one class that is very strong.
Right.
How does that shift the tax burden? Can you kind of explain that?
Yeah.
Because I, I think in Closter, you guys have an incredible retail facility right here in town. You have strong industrials, and your residential's have been stronger. Let's say the residential's fall off with increasing interest rates. How does that burden shift? And what is this in a reassessment? How does that play out?
Okay, so, so the, the best way to explain it is to envision a pie, okay? A pie chart. And in totality, the pie represents the total budget, school, county, and municipality. Within the pie, each slice of that is represented by a particular property class, okay? Residential's is a class. Within the residential's, individual property owners. Each person, when they pay their taxes, individual taxes, represents a very thin slice of what will ultimately add up to the total pie. If one section of that, of that pie, the industrial market, for example, that slice of that pie increases, circumference stays the same, that means everybody else around that slice decreases, okay? That's the best way to picture it in your head. So if you have a residential market in totality that represents, say, you know, 80% of that pie, okay? 20% is represented by the commercials. Those commercials now, after our adjustment, represent 25% of that pie. And now the residential's represent 75% of that. That means the residential's, on average, will, the burden, tax shift per se, the burden will go from the residential's to the commercials. So that's why it's important to do an annual reassessment, because each year, different types of commercial properties accelerate. Some cases, in the case of industrial properties, you've seen a boom in industrial value over the last several years, much more so than retail. If you have a healthy garden apartment, you have garden apartments, they're starting to, because of the cost of homeownership, and the younger millennials are not buying houses, but they're moving into apartments. And apartments are recognizing that, and they're raising their rents. So those line items become very valuable. When I can come into next year's annual reassessment, and I can address those two property classes and increase those with the changing market, it's only to the benefit of the remainder of the pie, remainder of the pie, in this case, being the residential's. Conversely, if you're not doing an annual reassessment, you can't raise those values. The state does not allow you to raise those values. The assessor is only able to change assessments if there's some material change, physical change, be it added assessment, or demolition, or fire, or some sort of, you know, other physical change that takes place. If the assessor wants to change any assessment due to the market, and market only, the state will say, oh, you got to put a plan in place. In this case, the plan, she has a plan right now. It's called the annual reassessment. So there are some towns where there's certain property types, like the industrials, or like the garden apartments, where whose value is increasing, they're not doing an annual reassessment. So the assessor cannot raise those values to achieve market value on that. Conversely, the areas that lose value are always the subject to a tax appeal. So you see how it's kind of a lose-lose situation for towns that do not do an annual reassessment. They don't have the capability of getting the gains in the market, but they certainly pay for the losses in the market via the appeals. When we come in to do an annual reassessment, we identify those areas that saw a drop in value, and we drop those values to where they should be. That avoids the appeal, okay? Then we look at the areas that gain value, and we increase the value there, okay? In some cases, it nets out. That's why that spreadsheet that I showed you, where the tax rate stays stable. That's what's going on. We're doing this, you know? And it all kind of nets out. But you can only do that if you're doing an annual reassessment. And by the way, when a municipality pays for lost tax appeals, they pay 100% of the refund, okay?
Which includes?
The school, which is 65%, at least. The school, they keep their share. The county, they keep their share. The municipality, they pay it all back. So these tax appeals are a huge financial burden on the, on the municipality. So we try to do the best we can to offset. You're never going to stop the appeals outright. It's always going to happen. But at least some of the obvious ones, you can eliminate right out of the gate.
And to that, that next logical question, just to touch on...
Do you have microphones? Do you don't have any microphones? Can Billy give you?
I'll, I'll speak a little louder. So to that next logical question, as Rick was saying, there is an appeal process. If your value is under a million dollars, or if your value is over a million dollars, it doesn't matter. You can file to the Bergen County Board of Taxation. When you go there, as a residential property owner, you have to provide comparable sales. You look at, and you look in your neighborhood, if there is sales of a similar home, or a sale of the sub, of your home, that is the best indicator of market value. So if you walk in and you say, Angela, my home's assessed at $750,000. I bought it for $500,000. It was on the market, you know, and that's what it was? That's a good indicator of what the value is. If you look in your neighborhood, and everyone's selling for a million dollars, and you're assessed at $750,000, you might be underassessed. And that's what the role in reassessment is trying to capture, is everyone to pair, pay their proportionate share. But back to the appeal process. So you would go to the county board, and you'd get a hearing date. You'd have to submit your comparable sales at least seven days in advance. You'll have a hearing before the county board of commissioners. They'll ask you questions like, you know, what, how many beds, how many baths, how new is the home, questions like that. And they will assess whether or not you are overvalued. And that is how you'd find your relief. They also, you know, there is the opportunity, with these role in reassessment towns, to have an informal hearing, where you don't have to go to the county, where you can go and, and sit and have a discussion, and maybe present enough evidence there to, to justify a reduction in your assessment. This process gives you kind of two bites at the apple, where you can go and have the informal hearing, and then you can go and appeal it to the county tax board. If you're not happy with the county tax board, you can take it up to the state. That's a whole nother process in that it becomes more elongate. It's a lengthier process, and the burden of proof just kind of raises a little bit level, of level. So there is always an opportunity contested. So don't think that you're ever stuck with your assessment. I think that this process does give a good vibe in terms of what the market is. Now, we've all seen there's no inventory. The sales are still crazy, even though interest rates have gone up. You know, I'm, I'm a property owner in Northern New Jersey. I see what that has done to my property values. And that is a great thing. I'm not saying you all are fairly assessed. I'm not trying to discourage anybody from, you know, asking the questions. But I think it is, it's true. Northern New Jersey is a hot residential market still, even with the interest, interest rates increasing. But what we're hoping to capture, and that was my first question, was we see a very hot industrial market. The apartment complexes are still going like crazy. The numbers are just astronomical. So we're trying to make sure everyone's paying their fair share through this process.
Are the other towns in Northern Valley, like Dumbrest and Horwath, doing an annual assessment?
Um, it, it, all of Bergen County is trending toward doing annual reassessment. There, most of these towns are waiting until, like Closter was ordered five years ago. They're waiting to get that... They're waiting to get that order so they can do their revow, and then they're following it. I can tell you thirty-two or, there's about thirty, we're doing about thirty-two municipalities in Bergen County, that's almost half the county.
Six towns in the county.
And the ones that are, and, and, and the ones that are not, not doing the annual reassessment are only because they're waiting to get ordered to do a revaluation. I can tell you, at last month's Bergen County Tax Board, nineteen municipalities were ordered. Now, Closter was not one of them, and Closter will not be one of them, because our statistics are, are near perfect. The, um, county board looks at, you know, towns that have ratios under eighty percent, have coefficient deviation, which is a statistic that measures uniformity, that happens when, when nothing's been done in a town for many years. They look at the number of years, quite frankly, between, um, reassessments, and they're very aggressive in Bergen County. They will order you, um, more times than not, much less than a ten-year, every ten years, it's been probably closer to five years. So, um, it's not something that a town can avoid. Eventually, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to either do what the borough here is doing, which makes all the sense for a number of reasons that we've gotten into, or you just wait it out and then you do that full, all-encompassing, very expensive, uh, process. Go ahead.
I was assessed at a hundred thousand in one year. My assessment went up a hundred thousand in one year. I think that's unconscionable, my taxes were up two thousand a year. So what am I supposed to do? Sell the house and go rent some basement? You're chasing seniors out of here with, how can you assess me a hundred thousand in one year?
Ma'am, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just clarify here, so we're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna have a discussion of individual property-
I need to use my examples, I'm giving you an example.
I understand, and I, I will answer your question to, to some extent. The issue that we have in New Jersey is property taxes are high. Valuations are high. I cannot fix that, we cannot fix that, your municipal government cannot fix that. They can, they can keep their budget as low as they can, and they have done that, as we saw by that earlier chart, that they have, they have maintained a budget that is very fiscally conservative, but this is northern New Jersey, and I, I-
In one year, in one year, I'm not saying gradual, in one year, you have set me a hundred thousand.
Again, I, I, I-
As an example, I can give you my address.
Yeah, it's-
It's very unconscionable.
I understand your frustrations. But that is, that is, that is a function-
I'm being chased down by Closter?
It's a, it's an issue that's not just, uh, individually to you, but I do hear, and I understand what you're saying.
All my neighbors and my friends were all frustrated.
Yeah, it's-
Forty years I'm living here.
Yeah.
I think it's, I, there is a state, I believe it's Atlanta, they remove the school taxes from the families that don't have children who go to school.
Then that is something that needs to be addressed by the legislator. We can, we can only work within the confines of the laws that we have, and that's what, we can only work within the confines of the laws we have, we don't have that ability here.
I mean, why doesn't Closter look into something like that?
We can't make that determination, that's a state, that would have to be the state legislator. You can talk to your legislators about that, and I think that makes sense. But, you then have to deal with the legislator, that's not a municipal, that's not a town issue that we can address here. So I just want to be clear that this town, by doing this annual reassessment program, is being proactive in making sure that everyone is paying their fair share, including your industrials, your retail, your apartment complexes. They can't deal with the allocation of taxes on a state level, that is something that the legislator does. What they do, and what this town has done, is been fiscally conservative to keep that tax rate low. So the allocation of taxes is still equitable. It might not be great for you, and I hear you, but that does not mean that it's wrong for everybody. And that is, it's the reality of what it is. And unless the legislator changes that allocation of taxes, unless they make exceptions for seniors, beyond a senior deduction of two hundred and fifty dollars to, I thought they were trying to-
Property tax relief programs?
Yeah, property tax relief programs, there are programs to help. They're not substantial, and the legislator needs to step up and do that. Because you're absolutely right, they are, they are aging up people out of New Jersey. But that's not something that this municipality is doing, and that's not something that this governing body is doing, because they are keeping a budget that is fiscally conservative.
Question. Um, I, I just want to go back to that one spreadsheet right here. And this is why I pointed this out. In two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we were not here, we did nothing. Taxes, fourteen eighty, fifteen two, fifteen five. Taxes are gonna go up every year. If we stop what we're doing tomorrow, next year, you're gonna, taxes are gonna go up again, that happens.
I understand, it goes up gradually, but in one year, one year, a hundred thousand more in a year, in one year. I know you're fixed to-
You're, 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 I don't know anything about your property. I do know that based on-
It doesn't matter, X doesn't matter.
Based on, based on what I see as, as what the average was, your circumstance was a lot higher than the average. I suggest you call the office and find out.
I, I, I follow those numbers, those numbers apply to me.
But, but the, okay, the average, the average assessment did not go up a hundred thousand dollars, okay?
Yeah, it sets me a hundred thousand more.
So there might be something specific to your property. I suggest maybe you, you call the office and find out, there might have been some contributing factor specifically to your property. But again, that's why we can't get into that, because I don't have your file.
My friends have the same amount.
After a house is not-
I'm sorry, there was a, there's a question, yeah, yeah, sorry, no, we'll, we'll work our way through. We, we'll open this up and everyone will have a chance to ask a question.
This whole process is daunting. Okay, especially when you have to do it every year, okay? You have to sit there, you have to go to appear, you have to call your office, you have to get somebody on the phone, somebody has to call you back. Okay, you go through all this information, okay, you kind of get a wave off, okay? In years past, we used to have a day where you could come in, okay, and you could talk to the appraiser company directly, if you had questions. Like this lady here, okay, she could have went on that day and she could have spoken to the appraiser, okay, who made the assessment one-on-one, okay, in a more, less daunting way. Why aren't we doing that?
Uh, actually, we did do that, yeah.
I didn't know anything until I got the letter in the mail.
It is, well, we-
Because I didn't know anything until I got the letter in the mail.
Okay, so, so, um, we, um, I was just talking to Sarah about the numbers. We, after we sent the letters, we did invite people to contact us for such a need.
That's, that's contacting you, getting on the phone, you know, we'll call you back, no, that's not what I'm talking about. I want to make this an easy thing, where I could come in, okay, they used to be in the city hall, okay, all set up. Okay, you would go in and you would talk to the assessor one-on-one.
But that's available.
And then you would share whatever information you had, and then you would look at the information, and you would come to some sort of resolution if there was one to be made, okay? Not having to go through all this paperwork, okay, not having to, uh, you know, have this be such a daunting, drawn-out thing, okay? And then if you didn't agree, you could then go to the appeal.
Well, let me, sorry, sir, just to clarify, this process that you guys have here right now is better than the non-revaluation or non-reassessment towns?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm talking about the revaluation. It's because no amount of talking that the constituents do, because unfortunately, this town, I think, is the few who dictate the many, okay? And it shouldn't be the other way around, okay? But that's not happening, so, until we all wake up, okay, and we say, hey, oh, hey, we're not doing this anymore, okay? That's not gonna happen. But just talking about the subject at hand, okay? I think that we should reinstate, okay, that process at which we can go in, okay, and talk to you guys one-on-one, okay, on a given day, all right, so that we don't have to go through all this trouble.
If I can just clarify that, I live in a municipality that does not do an annual reassessment. In a town that does an annual reassessment, can I-
I'm not talking about the reassessment, it's, it's a done course, okay? I'm talking about, if this lady has a problem, or I have a problem, which I do every year, okay? And go through silly phone calls and, and going back and forth, I mean, it's not working, people are not happy.
I live in a town that does not do an annual reassessment like you do here. I do not have an opportunity to have an informal meeting before my assessment is struck. I have to go to the county, I don't have a first bite at the apple. You do. On your assessment card, you get the opportunity to meet with-
I don't, I don't want to go through the assessment card, okay? I want to meet with them, okay? You don't get it, you not understand what I'm saying? This used to be a process that this town had, okay? All I'm saying is that we should reinstate it.
Okay.
Okay, that's it, plain and simple. You meet with us, we talk to you, you talk to us, everybody goes, I'm happy.
All right, thank you, sir, it exists, we do that, we did that.
You don't do that, you don't do that.
Okay.
Every year, every year I go through this, through this reassessment kind of thing, to talk to your guys, okay? To look at the market values, right, every year we go through this, it's ridiculous, it's a ridiculous process, okay? I mean, ridiculous, okay? I want to be able to have the ability to talk to the people that are actually doing your stuff, face-to-face, okay, one-on-one.
Thank you, and you can-
And like I said, this was a process that this town had, okay? All I'm saying is, let's just reinstate it.
Thank you.
That's all I'm saying, don't, you're not, no more smoking mirrors, okay? No more magic-
Opportunity to ask a question.
Just reinstate what we have.
Stay, stay, just a minute, you bring up a good point. I will take it back to the council and see if we can't reinstate the, uh, the, the one that, if we do, I can assure that, but we will at least take a look.
Okay, um, before we go to the next one, again, as, this is, this is my firm, okay? I was here twenty years ago when we did a revow, and I've been here for every revow and reassessment since. The process this year is no different than it was twenty years ago. We send out notification letters, we invite people to call our office, and if they have any questions, they can meet with us one-on-one, and they can discuss their property in a one-on-one basis. We did that twenty years ago, we did that ten years ago, we did that this year. This year, we had seventy meetings with seventy residents who called our office and wanted a personal, one-on-one discussion. That was the process this year, that was the process ten years ago, that was the process twenty years ago. I can vouch for it, because that was the process that my firm put in place. So, if anyone here wants to have a one-on-one meeting, I invite you to call our office, and we'll give you a one-on-one meeting, as described, as it was those years ago. So, next question? Anyone?
Holy, I have a question, well, first, a couple of comments. I myself tried the same process that was in this town hall before, and it didn't work for me, because I called your office, and the letter that I received said that I have a few business days to call, which I did almost next day. And I was told that, uh, somebody will talk to me. They cut me short, they gave me ten minutes of time, and they didn't even discuss the property, because first I wanted to get the data of what, what I'm working with, because all I got was just a letter, plain letter. So after they cut me short, I called again, and I talked to, uh, to one of your, um, representatives, she had my emails, and, uh, she said that she will have a manager call in. The manager never called me, but I called her again, she said, uh, I am the manager. So I never got another chance to speak to the real manager. So ultimately, she said, we can have a virtual inspection, uh, which they did. And I asked her, you know, before that, will I be able, will I have a chance to discuss the calculation? And she said, that same inspector that, uh, does the inspection will talk to you right after the inspection. Well, the inspector didn't talk to me, and he said, well, uh, all I'm doing is the inspection, we'll send you a letter. So I'm just giving you a brief story of my personal case, we're not discussing personal cases, but this, this is an example of how it used to work. In this hall or in the courtroom, there was a representative in the past, and I have lived here for thirteen years. There was a representative at the town hall where I could, you could come in and talk to them and explain, and you could discuss the numbers. So unfortunately for me, it doesn't work. The second comment is about, uh, how many municipalities you are, uh, working on. You said that only in Bergen County you are working in thirty-two municipalities. I'm looking at your website, it only gives eleven municipalities for Bergen County, so are you not showing the other municipalities?
Sorry, I have the website. Yeah, that's, there's, there's another, there's another website that is a, we're, it's kind of a long story. There's two, there's two firms that are merged into one now. If you go, there's another website, I can meet with you afterwards and hear that, and all those others will be on that one.
All right. And the most important one, actually, I don't know whether this meeting was triggered by me coming to the council meeting a few days ago, when I didn't get answers at the tax assessor's office. There is a calculation, well, first of all, we get a letter every year, uh, which is very simple. It gives you the last year's value, the next year's assessment, and, uh, informing you that this is what most likely will happen to the value of your house. So, in order for us to get any deeper into that, to understand the process, they invite us, uh, through your website, to get a property card. So, which I did, I, I requested a property card. I received a property card like this, which has almost no information whatsoever to understand the process. So I had to call again, and I got to the tax assessor. Suddenly, I get another card, which disposes much more information, it is this card. So the question first is, why not to send those property cards to the taxpayers right away? Or even more, why not to show those to all taxpayers, to all residents? And I'm sure, I don't mind sharing information about my house with my residents, the residents of this town, and I would like to know how the other residents' houses are appraised. Because we, as, as, as the taxpayers, could spot the issues, could spot the problems. It may be, uh, a problem that is, only seems to be a problem, or it may be a real problem. To give you an example, you have on your website, uh, there was, uh, this, uh, spreadsheet, which shows that, uh, property values residential have, uh, increased six percent. Well, some houses were increased twelve percent, and there is, there is a discrepancy why certain types of houses are appreciated more than the others. Market situation doesn't support that. All the more, the houses that have appreciated twelve percent are the worst of the houses that have never been in favor by real estate, uh, people at all. You would call it by levels, tri-levels, whatever, the houses that don't have basements, the houses have, have other things. So, coming back to the card, the question that every taxpayer should know is, the same way we pay our income tax, when we, when we pay our income tax, we know upfront, IRS or the state tax commission publishes a book that explains how to calculate your tax. You know your tax base, you arrive at your tax value, a taxable amount, pay your tax, and you know where you're at. There is no way for a taxpayer to understand this without your explanation. Now, through digging the information, which should have been presented right away, maybe as part of your letter, Real Property, uh, Appraisal Manual for New Jersey Assessors, that's probably what sits inside your, your calculation. Why not to explain that to the residents? And moreover, there are some values that are, that are taken by your own calculations, like, uh, for the land calculations. This is the, uh, the rate and the site, which I understand is split in some certain way between, uh, uh, just some numbers that you insert in the program and get the numbers. So, why not to explain why, say, three hundred thousand for fifty percent of the land, or whatever the value, for fifty percent of the value of the land, and then another portion based on the acre? So you have this arithmetic going behind the scenes that creates the structure that we end up paying our taxes for. Why not explain that? This is, this is important, we need to know upfront, the same way, and it would help, you, you, you made a good point. You, you knew the number of taxpayers, nobody wants to go to a tax, okay? Neither you nor us, because this is an expensive time, money maybe, if somebody would, uh, have to spend, uh, hire a lawyer. So why not to explain this whole process?
Rick, can I touch on one issue first? So, with respect to the property record cards, there has been a lot of legislation and litigation concerning people's property interests-
There has been a lot of legislation and litigation concerning people's property interests and their privacy interests. Not everyone wants to disclose how many bedrooms are in their house, or how many bathrooms, or the structure of their house, or where their entrances are. And there are serious privacy concerns. And I've litigated this on behalf of the Tax Assessors Association before the appellate division. There is also now Daniel's Law. Daniel's Law was enacted in response to a federal court judge who someone shot at her front door because her address was disclosed publicly. That legislation was broad and sweeping across the state of New Jersey, and it was, it was kind of a shocking response to a very tragic issue. So, what ultimately, all these county boards of taxation, private companies, public companies. They've had to remove all of this data to avoid running afoul of Daniel's Law. We have not worked that out yet. Daniel's Law was enacted about two years ago, and we're still working through it. And I'm still dealing with that in the court system on behalf of the Assessors Association, trying to balance a personal, a person's reasonable expectation of privacy versus a public need to know. And I hear what you're saying, that you should be able to understand the basis of taxation, but there's also a expectation of privacy that people have in their properties. That they don't want people to know what their house layout looks like. And I think that's reasonable, and I also think it's reasonable what you're saying. So, in terms of what you're given, on your own property, you can receive your property record card. We have to safeguard this information. We are the gatekeepers, the municipalities' gatekeepers for a lot of private information that you entrust municipality to hold. And that is something that is a very tough balancing act. And we are given pushes and shoves, and we are going both ways, where the Supreme Court allows for certain residential addresses to be disclosed for people that have dog licenses. You know, do you want it known that you have a dog, whether or not, you know, you might be subject to a home invasion because you don't have a dog? And those, these are arguments that have gone before the Supreme Court, and they've articulated them, and they've said, generally disclose it. And then we have the legislator trying to claw some of this back, saying that we don't want all this information out there. So, in terms of the disclosure of property record cards, financial data, it's, it's a very tough balancing act. I hear what you're saying on one end, but I think there's other people that would say the other side, where I don't want the information out there. Um, but in terms of the evaluation aspect.
It's, it's a law that's on the books now.
What, Daniel's Law?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. I'm gonna answer your question about um, the specifics of the property record card. Um, if you go file an appeal at the county board of taxation, I don't know if anyone here has had that experience of filing an appeal. Um, you go down to Hackensack, um, you sit in a room, you call your name, and uh, they say, mister or misses so-and-so. I see that you're assessed for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Tell us why you think that your house is worth less than eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? They do not, not my rule, their rule, they will not entertain you getting into the nuances of the property record card, the site, the rate, all the detail that you have in front of you, you know, these formulas, the real estate manual. They don't wanna get into the weeds of that. They will ask you the question, tell us why you think your house is worth less than eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And there's only one way that you can make your case, and that's by presenting homes that are comparable to yours that have sold less than eight hundred and fifty thousand. So, your argument is going to be, the house across the street is just like mine, and it sold for eight hundred. The house down the street is just like mine, and it sold for seven fifty, and the house next to that one sold for seven hundred. Therefore, based on these three current sales, homes just like mine, this company overstated my value by a hundred thousand dollars. That's the argument they wanna hear. They're not gonna entertain the nuances of the detail of the property record card, knowing that. When you have a discussion with my firm, okay, we try to lead you to the information that's useful to you. That's why we post all of the sales. We post all of the sales by neighborhood. We give you the information essentially that you need in order to present your case to the Bergen County Board of Taxation. Go down to the Bergen County Board of Taxation, if you don't believe me, and start talking about the property record card and the New Jersey State Manual and all of the details. And you'll see, I don't want you to waste your time. I don't want that. I don't want anyone to waste their time doing that. I'll let you know what you need to do when you go down. If anyone here has filed a county tax appeal, let me know if, if that was your experience.
Well, then we're talking about two parallel processes, not connected with each other, then what's the point of having an appraisal process? Leave ultimately, the real value of the house is determined by uh, the greenhouses on the block to be brought to the board of appeal.
Because the, the, all of the sales, the actual sales that take place, neighborhood by neighborhood, are utilized in order to calibrate those details that you see in that property record card. So, at the end of the day, that model that's in place right now, that looks very detailed and very hard to understand and hard to read, is hundred percent calibrated by the actual sales. So, it gets proven out by the sales. If the sales don't support the number at the bottom of that property record card, then none of that means anything. And it's very easy for you to prove that by simply presenting us with homes that are similar to yours that sold for much less than that number that's on the bottom of that property record card. And then you don't even need to get into the minutia of the detail of the property record card.
Oh, this uh, this uh, essentially averages out a property. So, anyone having the most expensive home will be able to argue that his home is supposed to be cheaper. Anyone who has the worst home on the block will always be in a disimputative position, because there would be no comparison to bring to the uh, appeal court.
I can assure you that there are, when we look at the entire universe of sales, we're looking at all the low sales, we're looking at the high sales, and everything in between. And we don't even meet the outliers. So, if, if I go into a condominium complex, and every single unit is exactly the same, and it's brand new, so there's no depreciation variations at play. And there's hundred units, and there's a hundred sales that took place in, in the past year. They're not all gonna sell for the same price. Maybe, maybe twenty-five uh, percent of them sell for five hundred and fifty thousand, maybe twenty-five percent sell for five twenty-five, maybe twenty-five percent sell for four seventy. We find the median sale price, and we strike the assessments uniformly at that price. So, you know, there's going to be some variation. We're not hitting the lowest of the low, nor are we hitting the highest of the high. So, the highest sale in the neighborhood is never gonna sit out. Conversely, the lowest uh, sale in the neighborhood is not high. It's that sweet spot, it's that median sale price. Yeah, I'm sorry, we gotta allow.
It's uh, the taxes, let's say, mayor and council, does a great job, and the taxes either go up a fraction of a percent, or even, let's say, fall like we call. How do you justify us spending money on the appraisal to reassess the whole town every year?
Look, and Rick, I, I think Rick touched on this when we talked about the pie. If the, if the budget stays the same, but the industrial market is stronger, or the apartment market is stronger, you will see that, that pie shift. The, the slice of the pie will shift. So, in theory, the residential pie could get smaller. And the industrial could get bigger.
The town doesn't have to spend any more money. It's budgeted, everything's covered. Why should we spend money to have an appraisal?
If, if I could answer that from a budgetary wise. That the fact that the way they're doing with the rolling assessment, basically, the county's gonna order us to do a full assessment every five years, regardless of what we do.
Or less.
That's gonna cost us X. Now that we're doing it every year, we're not paying that same X every single year. We're only paying a fifth of that X. So, basically.
Is it less than the five year, or is it ever do it every year cheaper than the X?
I think it's cheap, it's cheaper doing it every year.
And I, I think that is, this is shown right here, where this is the amount that's coming out of the taxpayer dollars. This is the money that you guys are spending, taxpayer dollars to pay back overpaid tax, overassessed properties. That number has gone down significantly year over year, and that's, that's not like a percent reduction from year, that's a savings each year. That's, that's how much you're saving.
Can I ask you one more question?
The, the benefit to keeping everything stable on commercial tax appeal.
Yeah, right. So, there's a, there's a, to answer your question, um, from the, what the administrator said. Similar towns that I am um, submitting proposals to, as I said, there's nineteen towns that just got ordered to do revaluations. Similar sized towns um, are costing anywhere between three hundred thousand and three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
For one, for one assessment?
One, oh, one and a half, right? And towns have no choice, because they're ordered to do this, and the town pays. It's ironic, the, the state, the county order the town to do it, but then they make the town pay to do it. But uh, so, so, we do this fifty thousand per year. So, um, if the town uh, gets ordered every five years, say, um, you know, it's gonna be three hundred thousand and rising, with rising costs. So, by doing it fifty per year, it's, it's actually saving the town money for the inevitable order that is waiting for economy. That's just one benefit, though. I think I might have done this in this town, mayor, you might remind me, where I showed you um, an example in the first year that we did this. Where I did a spreadsheet, where I showed all of the properties that had sales that actually fell under their assessments. And as the tax attorney can attest to, when that happens, you're settling the appeal. You have no case. If you, if your property sells tomorrow for ten percent less than what we put it at, we're gonna settle it through the tax appeal process. Because that's the right number. Um, and there's, every year, sales move like this. And there's maybe several dozen, maybe more, properties that will fall slightly under, some maybe more than slightly. Um, by doing this every year, we see those sales, and we make adjustments before it becomes an appeal. I had done a spreadsheet, I think, for mayor and council after the first year, where I showed them the sales, the lower sales that fell below the assessments that would have been in place had we not done the annual. I made the assumption that it was going to be an appeal, which I think is a safe assumption. And the resulting tax dollar refund as a, as a result of, of settling those. And those are just appeals that are sales. None of them became appeals, because we took the appeal away. We adjusted the number to where it should be. People were happy, their assessment went down. No reason to appeal. By wiping that and comparing that to what would have been, that cost alone was, you know, four times what the town was paying us to do the annual assessment. And so, there's that. Then there's another, a little more difficult to explain, but the whole ratio issue of where a town's ratio is a, is a statistic that the state gives a town when they compare sales in a given year to assessments. And when you're not doing a revaluation, the state still makes an assumption of what the town is worth in terms of the ratio. Again, this is complicated. That gets applied to commercial properties, which a tax attorney can explain. Is puts town under tremendous pressure to meet that ratio, and a lot of money gets, gets refunded as a result of, of that low ratio on large commercial properties. Tax attorneys who file appeals against municipalities hate this program. They can't stand it. It's money out of their pocket. Because they like to scour these towns, they like to look for big commercials that have high exposure, in towns that have low ratios. They like to file the appeal at, at no cost to the homeowner, or to the property owner. It's on a contingency basis, because they know they're gonna win, and they bring these.
They sit in court for years.
They sit in court for years, two, three years, and what ends up happening is the assessor, and the tax attorney, and the town appraiser have to go before the governing body and say, guess what, you're gonna have to refund several hundred thousand dollars. Not because the assessment's wrong, but because of this ratio issue. And that is really where the town, I think, has seen the value in the avoidance of that to the tune of fifty thousand dollars a year is, is a small price today. Yeah, I think just trying, trying to quantify that with relatively simple numbers, if your ratio drops by ten percent, and you have a property that's worth a hundred million dollars, that property is now ten percent over assessed, there's ten percent exposure there. And that tax burden is astronomical, and if that sits there for two years, it doubles, and it's, it is a massive issue. And that's what happens in, you know, a lot of Hudson County has not gotten on this program. There's some of the municipalities, Bayonne. Um, some of those down there that sit at ratios there at thirty percent. And if they drop from thirty to twenty-three percent, or from ninety to eighty-two percent, every tax appeal attorney looks at that and says, there's eight percent right there. If their number was right at a hundred percent, I'm now at eighteen percent exposure. So, this number keeps that, that fluctuation. It's not, you, you guys aren't gonna have a hundred percent success rate. But you're gonna be a lot closer than if your ratio drops by ten percent. It's gonna minimize exposure exponentially, and that's what has happened. So, that's, that's the refund that plays out in the numbers, not in, not in theory. So, Levi, you bring up Bayonne. So, several years ago, I, I happened to be the person who did the first revaluation in Bayonne since the late days. They waited on thirty years between revows. And it was tough, and it, you know, but I survived it, because when I ultimately redid those numbers, so many years went by, and those assessments were so out of whack, that when I rated the shit, it caused, you know, five hundred thousand dollar homes. Simple four hundred thousand dollar homes. Some of these people saw increases of not thousands of dollars, but tens of thousands of dollars in one year. And it was, it was tough to deal with that. And you ask, okay, I don't understand, like, why? Well, because the assessment on record for your house was like twenty-five thousand dollars, and now it's worth five hundred thousand dollars. Well, the difference is, the last time it was done was nineteen eighty-nine, which, if y'all remember, that was right after the market crash of eighty-seven, eighty-eight. The housing crash of eighty-seven, eighty-eight. And so, by kicking the can down the road for the, for the powers that be in Bayonne, they put ultimately, the twenty twenty-four, uh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, I think twenty twenty-one governing body in a position where they had to eat it, and they had to deal with the consequence of not doing this. Essentially, that's what uh, governing bodies have a tendency to do in some of these counties, like Hudson County and Union County, where they know it's gonna be a problem, they know there's a ton of people who are underpaying, a ton of people who are overpaying. They just don't wanna deal with the consequence of a tax shift. Tax shift can only happen over time. And so, here in Closer, um, there will never be a tax shift, so long as they continue to progress, because it gets adjusted every year. But if it doesn't get adjusted, if we did nothing next year, and we did nothing the year after, and we did nothing the year after, and the market kept going up, and then the county ordered to do a revaluation, then someone like myself comes in to do a revow, and it all gets made up in one year. And trust me, it's gonna be a, a big nut to uh, to swallow when you have to pay, you know, a twenty-five hundred dollar increase as opposed to, you know, a hundred dollar increase. Go ahead.
Can I just go back to the um, data and the privacy issue? I mean, I think we all understand and can appreciate, you've got personal data on our homes, and that you wouldn't share it with somebody else, but I would like to see the data that you have specifically on my home.
Yeah, absolutely. You can get your own property record card, you know all your data for yourself.
You know, it's interesting, because I just looked up Daniel's Law, okay? It has nothing to do with disclosure of, of homes or anything like that.
It does.
It applies to government officials, like judges and prosecutors.
It's real.
Okay, whose addresses are disclosed, okay?
As I said, the law is above what we are able to, to deal with right now. So, uniformly, almost across the state, most counties have ordered that the information be redacted, because it's hard to ascertain which prosecutor.
because it's hard to ascertain which prosecutor-
Which prosecutor lives here most, or which judge lives here most, which judge lives in that section?
I don't get the details of that.
Can we finish your question?
Go ahead, finish your question.
Yeah, man, sorry.
So I didn't receive, I requested and I received the record card. It's a little map of the house where it sits on the property and a whole bunch of hieroglyphics, without a legend. I mean, I don't understand what it is that I'm, what I'm looking at.
It's hard.
What, what information is there behind that that I can take a look at to make sure that you have, you have the details of my home correct?
Okay, so, so this is, this is where it gets, this is where it gets a little, a little complicated because, um, the formulas, uh, Mr. -
Austin Pope.
I'm sorry. Um, the formulas that he was showing on the property record card are, are, they're not my formulas, it's not my program.
I'm not looking for formulas, I just wanna know how many statements do you say in that document?
Right, the so-called hieroglyphics, and I agree, it is very, um, not, it's not reader friendly. That's dictated to us by the state of New Jersey, that's their program, not mine. And I am required to use that on the property record card. And there is a, uh, a, um, real property appraisal manual, Mr., um, I think Alex. Alex, okay, Alex, Alex has it, he can share it with you, it's available on, online. But it's hard, it's hard to, to read, unfortunately. As far as the record card is concerned, but there is some information on there which is objective. For example, how many bedrooms do I have, how many bathrooms do I have? Do you have me down for a fireplace or a finished basement? You can extract that out of it, and we'd be happy to help you do that.
So you can't send me anything, but I can call and, and you can explain that to me over the phone?
We can, absolutely, explain that to you.
But there's no other document that you can send to me?
Well, he showed, um, Alex showed two, two versions, right?
Right.
He called the one, uh, a simplified version of the more detailed version. The simplified version, the difference between the two is the simplified version has the information, I think, that you're only interested in, the objective information. The detailed version has all of the, you know, detailed formulas.
If I call tomorrow, could you send me the detailed version of it?
I can send you both, sure.
We can, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just want to make one comment, you know, as much as I have, uh, whatever I, uh, I requested to have plus downloaded the property appraisal manual, whether you will find the legend, by the way, which I unsuccessfully tried to get through the tax assessor's office, but finally going through the two hundred, three hundred pages of this manual, I found the legend. It would be much more helpful to have the legend in the back, like, you know, whether you-
Well, it's a big book.
No, no, the legend here is on one page, it's just, I don't remember the page number, it's legend for those abbreviations that you have. But there is information that-
It's on the background.
Yes, CCF, it's one page, appraisal manual.
Go ahead.
But what you have that we do not have anywhere is proprietary information belonging to you and you only is certain numbers that you plug in into that software to arrive at the final result. This is called, in the land calculations, this is called rate and site. This information is taken manually, subjectively by an appraiser. So apparently, you go by neighborhoods, and each neighborhood is assigned a certain value.
Correct.
So why not to publish that, that rate sheet so that people could see? Is my real property fairly appraised? Take an example, this town has had a sixty kilometer line going through a long urban avenue, right? So this certainly de- devalues the properties going, uh, have, being placed, uh, on, on that road, right? So when you appre- when you give these valuations, it would be helpful to compare, for example, Alpine Drive, which is the most upscale part of the town, with the western part of the town, which is not as much upscale. And then we could see, are you really applying the same kind of, uh, principle towards different neighborhoods?
So I just wanna mention one item. So on the value ladder that we send, underneath the block, lot location, you should see NBHD.
Yes.
So that is your neighborhood.
Right.
Um, so you can utilize that to help you decide for what area of town. And on the website, we have a neighborhood map, which will have every neighborhood color coded. And then also on the sales spreadsheet, there's a, um, a column that says neighborhood as well, so help you try to narrow down.
Yeah, unfortunately, and that was another question, which I sent to Fran, your colleague, asking, your sales spreadsheet shows values for the whole properties. It doesn't distinguish land from the property. You may have a very big piece of property, piece of land, and very small house in my personal. So there is no way to, to deduce, uh, the, the information that comes into your formula.
Um, yeah, we, uh, it was one of the slides that we covered here. Again, I do not want to mislead people into an argument that the, either the county tax board, and correct me if I'm wrong, Levi, or the state tax board will not entertain, okay? And this is an example where it is well established that the vision of an assessment between land improvements is an administrative action that does not create two separately contestable assessments. Taxpayers seeking to establish tax relaying must demonstrate that they have higher property, not merely devalued due to land improvements. And there's case law that we put up there. This is not my, my law. If you were to go down to the county board of taxation again, under this scenario, and start to define land versus building, they wouldn't entertain it.
Right, but that's only if we go for appeals.
Right.
No one wants to go for appeal, we have other business to do. And, uh, we pay taxes from your letter, which is based on your calculation. So rather than trying to argue the case, we want to understand how this process is done so that we would remove even more questions from the, uh, tax appeal court or whatever court we may end up in. You may even further reduce the number of complaints. That's, that's the whole idea, we want to be proactive in understanding our taxes. And your calculation is not based on comparable sales as the law directs. It's based on the, on this manual that the state of New Jersey published and, uh, the, uh, software that you are using to calculate. So we just want you to understand how you started from point A, then ended up to point B.
Right.
That's all.
Right, so I think what Sarah was saying is that if you identify your neighborhood, you can go on our website, you can see exactly where your neighborhood is, the boundaries of your neighborhood. And you can see, and you have on the property record card, the land values scribed to that neighborhood. And then, you know, that's how you'll be able to differentiate.
Can we see other values for other neighborhoods?
Well, that's where we get into the, um, privacy issue.
No, there is no privacy issue in, in just the general statistics.
Of the, because you would get it off of the property record.
Yeah. And I must, I must agree with the gentleman sitting there, Daniel's law is not about, it's about judges, police officers.
The problem is, I, I can just head that off right now, and I, I hear you, I agree. I've argued against this. I, I don't su- I don't support the law for different reasons. In theory, it's a great idea to protect our law enforcement officers, our judges, from malfeasance. It's effective action from the legislature when they put this law in effect. They did not think about how it would impact the county board of taxation, who has property records for sales, deeds, permits for your building department. We don't know a hundred percent who is or who is not a law enforcement officer or a judge. They are starting to implement a process where you register online. That is still trickling through the system. That's what we're dealing with right now, we don't have a perfect system yet. I understand what you're saying, it, it does not affect you or me. I'm not a judge, I'm not a prosecutor, um, you know, and there has been iterations of the law that might cover public officials, elected officials. It just makes it inordinately burdensome for a municipality to figure out who or who is not covered. The directive from the division of taxation has been to redact all names and addresses, or not all names, so that we don't have any slips, there's no issues. That's not our decision, that's not our decision here, that's not appraisal systems, that's not Angela's or mine or the mayor's. It is the state, the division of taxation has given that directive at this point.
Yeah. I mean, I understand your frustration, I know where you're going with this. In order to do, I think, the kind of analysis that I believe you would like to do, you need to do sort of a compare, contrast between your property and other properties in town. And ten years ago, you could very easily have done that. In fact, there was a mechanism in some of these towns where you could just type something in and you would get the record card for any one of your neighbors, and then you see, okay, the land is, is X on here and it's Y on here, there in this neighborhood, how does that compare to mine? People did those sorts of analyses. We just shut it all down, the advent of Daniel's-
I disagree with you, I'm sorry. I access those databases every day and I can see them. I can find any property and I can find the tax value, the land value, the property value. What we don't have is how you arrive at those numbers, how you come up with those rate and site numbers. These are your proprietary numbers, they have nothing to do with the Daniel's law. This has to be disclosed. And if our government doesn't work on a transparent basis, we, we have a trouble. We're all in trouble, because every, every, if, if there is more and more argument for security for no legitimate reason, there will be a point when we will be just taking those letters and just accepting our trade. You know, we have, we should be able, as taxpayers, have the same access to the same information you have. Only then we will have equal rights. Otherwise, you as officials or quasi-officials of the government have superiority over us, the taxpayers. That's what we do.
If I can, if I can just step back a second, because I understand what you're saying. But I, I think we, for everyone's purpose here, if you have sales in your neighborhood that support a reduction in your assessment, bring them to Angela, bring them to Rick. You will justify a reduction, it doesn't matter the data, it doesn't matter what the formula was. If you have sales that support a reduction, show them to them, and you'll get a reduction in your assessment. I don't want to dumb it down that much, but that's exactly what the system is designed to do. You don't have to worry about the formulas. Most people don't have the time or the wherewithal to go through this whole analysis about how did you extract the land values from comparable sale in a different neighborhood and do that full analysis? If you have a sale in your neighborhood that supports a reduction, come with it, and you'll be entitled to a reduction, that's what the process supports.
And you don't have to go through an official tax appeal? Like you said before, going to the county first and-
Come to me first, and if, if it's there, I'm, I'll be the first one to, to change it. If, 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 if there, if a property, if you showed me a property just like yours, and that's the key, just like yours, not something that's at the size, you know, or half falling down. If you show me a property that's just like yours, that understates the value that we put on your property, I'm sure Angela would agree, we'd be the first one to make an adjustment to your property. And we have, and we have.
And just to clarify what Rick's saying, when he says just like yours, we're talking apples to apples. You know, it could be a Macintosh apple, it could be Golden Crisp apple, it could be, you know, some other kind of apple. But if you show an orange, if you show, you know, um, a small knockdown house that's selling just for the land value, then that's not gonna be comparable to your house, that might have a swimming pool. Or that might have three bedrooms, two baths compared to the one bedroom, one bath. So show apples to apples, they don't have to be exact, not a hundred percent, because there's no real exact comparison. Unless you live in a, a structured community, where like the-
The condos was a good example of that.
But, so again, the simple process is that if you see comparable sales in your neighborhood that don't support your assessment, come to the town. Come to the town, and we will work with you, we will make it right. That's what the process is designed to do, that is the first bite of the apple. If you're not happy with that result, you go to the county. You're not happy with what the county does, you have a state, you have three times to contest this. But I think the first one, and I think the most fair one, and you'll see this, if you have something that is worth it, we'll be right there. Every single one at this table and the governing body will be right behind you saying, yeah, you, you should be paying more than your fair share. And that's what this whole idea is, it's, it's-
Right, no one wants you to pay more than your fair share, that's not the intent of this.
We allocated for about an hour and a half of this meeting, so we're almost near, we think, uh, one or two more questions.
Sure. Angela took my information to get me the detailed-
Great.
Information, I appreciate that.
Great.
The reason I'm asking is, I just wanna make sure that you have accurate information about my home. My neighbor discovered when you did the inspections in September, you had them down as a five-bedroom home.
Okay.
They have three bedrooms.
Yeah.
What happened was, they bought the house ten years ago, one level, two bedrooms, they added three upstairs. Those two bedrooms on the first floor got turned into bigger living room, dining room.
It happens.
So there's a difference between being assessed at a three-bedroom versus a five-bedroom.
And, and I mean, listen, it, it, changes are, are happening all the time. I talked about the need to do inspections on an ongoing basis.
I'm, I'm not, I'm trying to figure out the formalistic, I just wanna make sure you've got accurate information.
And that's part of it, is we wanna get inside of the home. If we've never gained interior access to the home, then there may be inaccuracies. So that's part of that informal review that we offer is also an inspection. So it's very important to make sure that data is accurate so that you're getting assessed for what you have.
And then the other question I had is, have you handled reassessments for homes that are under construction? We've got a lot, like, homes in Closter that have been knocked down, and they're building big houses over the course of multiple years, have you handled reassessments?
So the law, the law is pretty clear on that. It's, it's the as-is-as-of value October first of each pre-tax year. So when we do it for this year, it will be October first, twenty twenty-four. What is the exact condition of the property as of October first, twenty twenty-four? And we value it in that, in that state. If it's fifty percent done, then it'll get fifty percent of an approved value. Subsequently, the day that it's done, the tax-
Ready for its intended use.
Ready for its intended use. Subsequently, when the property is ready for its intended use, thank you Angela, she'll come and she will give what's called an added assessment. Well, she will start assessing it from that point going forward. So there's, there's probably a window of time where they're not fully assessed from the time October first happens to the time that it's ready for its intended use. It could be two months, it could be six months, it could be nine months.
So they would've been in the last window of October first, twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, okay?
I mean, you're right, sometimes these homes sit there for a long time in an unfinished state. I mean, there are other mechanisms that the town has to try and maybe move things along. But I, I don't know, it varies from town to town, but as far as we're concerned, I can only value it as it is as I see it, as it is as of October one. And then as progress is made on it, the assessor will be checking in. When it's ultimately done, we'll be assessing it.
But is it done and is it assessed when it's done? I mean, in a timely fashion?
Fully. Retroactive.
Because I have a neighbor-
Typically, it's done with permits, and there are people, and I'm not saying anyone in this room would ever do anything like this, will do work without a permit, or will not close a permit-
Not a new house, though.
To avoid this triggering effect.
But not knocking down and building a new house?
Exactly.
I have someone, I own property in Closter, but I live in Demarest, and there was a house that was taken down behind me, finished last August, I'd say they moved in. And from the public records, it looks like they're still paying.
Uh, yeah, Angela's, and so, so the way the mechanism works, the state-
And that would be August two thousand twenty-three, and we're here in February.
This is in Demarest?
Well, I don't wanna say that for it.
Okay, so, so the added assessment list gets published. So you can, you can finish a project in January of twenty twenty-four, but you're not gonna see it on the tax rolls until the following fall. But rest assured, those taxes get picked up retroactively.
And do they, are you able to collect retro, you know?
Oh, you have to, you have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How far back can you go? Like, let's say on an addition or something like that.
Far back as you need to, from the point that it's done. Yeah.
So you could go back three years?
I, two years, two years. Two years.
That's what I thought, two years.
Two years.
And, and are you, do, do, are you able to collect, or do they argue it or bring it to court or whatever?
Yeah, well, this, we're getting kind of into the nuances of single property. Generally, you have to pay your municipal taxes. If you don't, there can be a lien sold against your property, if you don't pay your taxes. So that would be the recruitment mechanism at the end of the day, is that a tax lien can be sold for your property if you don't pay.
Just that the process, the way it works in Closter, is that when the building inspectors go do their final report and give their inspections, they then tell Angela, on this date, I did my inspection- on this date, I did my inspections, it's finished. That's the date.
Okay. I just was wondering if it typically is done in a timely fashion, where they get reassessed?
Well, that is, that is part of this- That is part of this program, where every, every year, twenty percent of the properties, and if somebody is trying to sneak around, that is the inspection dates, and they'll get assessed fairly, whether or not they took a permit out. You get the inspection, where you pick up, somebody added something that they didn't take a permit out for. And it happens. Um, you know, I'm sure not these five municipal citizens pay, but it's, uh, you know, it does happen.
Well, I'd like to, uh, thank everybody for, for coming. I'd like to thank the folks here for giving this presentation. I hope, uh, everybody's learned a little bit. I know I have learned a little bit tonight. Uh, but, uh, we're trying to do this in, in, uh, fair and equitable ways to possible. Thank you all for coming.